Okay, make a motion to open the meeting. Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blistra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The agenda here, let's take a look at this. The secret referral to us for short-term rentals that it left off the published agenda.
I think when I spoke with our attorney, she said that it didn't need to be noticed right now. It was just a discussion.
Well, I said it didn't need to be noticed, but it should be on the agenda.
Yes, exactly. That's what it is. Okay. What agenda do you have, Jessica?
One that says 50 State and three Shane Place.
Yeah, there was an update to the one online, so maybe when I printed yours, it didn't have that. Missing the copy right there.
Okay, so it's on the published agenda, that's good.
Yeah.
All right, then we can discuss it, so that's good.
Sure.
Let's start out with conflicts of interest disclosure. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
I don't.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. And as an update, I had heard that three Shane Place is not coming in tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, they've asked that the matter be tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. Was this noticed? So, do we need to open the public hearing and start that so we don't have to renotice it?
I think that you can make a motion to table it and advise the public through tonight and through the website that the matter would be tabled until the next public meeting.
So, does that need to get renoticed at that time?
No.
No, okay. All right, so then I'll make a motion to not take up three Shane Place use variance at tonight's meeting and postpone discussion of that until our next regular meeting. What time is that?
November 6.
Okay, so our next meeting would be November 6 at 6:30 PM would be the time that we would continue discussion on that.
So, the motion is to table the matter to the November 6 meeting?
Yes.
Second. Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blistra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and the next one is, I'm on the agenda, is 50 State Street. And my thought here, if anyone has any other ideas, please speak up, is to just let the applicant present initial introduction to the project and then we'll discuss. Are we free to open the public hearings?
Sure.
Okay, so then we'll take any public comments that anyone may have and then we'll start discussing this on the board. Okay, so with that said, is anyone from 50 State Street here?
Hi, Amy.
Hi, hello.
My name is Ariann Commission. My dad's got a commission. Charlie Fox is here as well. We own the business that the building is in, but we do not own the property. So, we're just going to present to you a little bit about why we wanted to do this, but if you have specific questions about how it will be done, he is here to answer those because I am grateful that I did not. We moved in, it'll be three years ago in November. We came from downtown Salt Lake area. We had been there for seven and a half years and then we needed more space, so we found a spot, had much better traffic, and was willing to do all those things, so we came into Pittsburgh. Since we have moved here, our annual revenue has, I'm bad at percentages, we went from doing about $120,000 a year to doing about $500,000 to $600,000 a year.
Bravo.
So, it has, yeah, like absolutely blown up our business significantly more than expected, but certainly not, I'm not disappointed, right? So, we have shifted a little bit. We started as a totally vintage shop that has become a super cool thing for people to do on site, which makes my life harder, but it's good for the world, so I'm into it. So, we have picked up more new furniture that requires a more consistent retail floor space, so we just need, we're running out of room essentially as we adapt to kind of how the market is changing, how our business is growing. Because it used to be, we did a lot of it, did a little new in between, and now we're working on a model where we do a lot more custom order furniture, so we need frames or versions on the floor and then people order exactly what they want here. It's been awesome because I used to actually work full-time at a corporate career while I did this and I was able to quit that last year, so now I do this full-time, which is fantastic. So, our thought was, we were running out of room, what do we do? We considered moving, we prefer not to move. I like the space, I like the area, we're happy with it, we get good traffic, we have good customers. And so, we looked and currently we have our building and then there are a couple dumpsters and then there's a second building, which is also our rental. So, we use that for storing furniture, things that need to be delivered, whereas the other space is our actual retail and workshop space. So, our thought was that we could just take the back of one building and connect it to the front of the other building and have those dumpsters meet, and the new location that we have in the layout. So, we would not be changing anything about the way the building looks aside from itself, so there would be no differences in architectural style or finish or anything like that. We would move the back to meet them up. The one thing, I was trying to think of what it would impact in terms of surrounding area, and the only thing I can think of is I would love it if we had more business, which might be, we get, we get three to five freight trucks a month right now that come deliver things, I would love for that to double, so it would be somewhere between six and 10 freight trucks a month. They come between our open hours usually of 10 o'clock and 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So, that's the one thing I can think of.
The more often they come, the more they realize that earlier in the week and earlier in the day is better for them. And so, they do attempt to make it before lunch hour and in the first half of the week as opposed to the next half of the week. And we have them come in downright as a bike shop and then come along the back of the parking area.
Some of them come in with like an 8-foot truck. Sometimes it's an normal-sized truck, but some of them are basically such a truck.
But that gives them clearance there without having to negotiate the primary parking area.
Yeah, but they don't come at, we're not like at grocery store, we don't get like 4 a.m. deliveries.
All right.
That is, yeah, my thoughts. Do you have questions?
We may, but just so you know, a lot of what we get into is some of the technical details of it, so we're kind of concerned about some of the public safety things. So, when people came in before, we're like, well, you know, do your plans comply with our landscaping requirements and code? Does the lighting adequately illuminate the outside for public safety and things like that? So, those are some of the things we look into. You wanting a building and its general design is generally your business.
Okay.
If it complies with code requirements and isn't hurting other adjacent properties, then, you know, usually those things are approved. So, I'm just trying to tell you kind of the lens that we're, we kind of look at things on, because I think that's helpful.
Yeah, it's helpful.
But thank you for the introduction. My thought at this time, let's see if there's any comments, if that's helpful.
Do you want to stop moving?
You can stay wherever you want to stay.
Yeah, wherever you're comfortable.
So, I'll make a motion then to open the public hearing and I'm guessing this is going to be for both applications, for both the variance and site plan. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, motion to open the hearing. Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Blistra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we have a meeting both online and physical present. Let's start with people in the room. If anyone in the room would like to make some comments, we'll state your name and your address and then your comments, and then we'll open it up to people online. If anyone online would like to make some comments, there is a raise hand button and you can click on that and then you can present whatever comments you may have to the board. So, I'll start within the room here. Yes. You can stay wherever you want.
If I can request, it is helpful when the speakers come up just because we need to catch it for our audience. It's usually that just to make sure you're close.
Do you want it right here?
Yeah, just talk loud.
Closer.
I just need to make sure you're close to the speaker, yeah. Oh, no, it's our room.
People can raise their hand if they can.
All right, Mr. First.
Our 370 State Street, thanks to the applicants who are before the board. I'd like to stop just initially as a side comment. I appreciate the owners of the building, it's a great place, it's managed well, obviously a great product, it's a secret project out of the site at that particular building. Well, I do though, I'll begin, and I won't say this with any analysis or anything else, but just as a general background observation, reading the application, I think it's incomplete and I'll go through that and just pull it in a second. And therefore, before, I suggest they postpone this related to this information. As an example, there's criteria in the application, there's a lot of information missing on the application form itself, there's a lot of items that are required to be placed on the drawing, more specifically a site plan as well as a survey plan, and in the site plan there should be a lot of site data such as the building areas, the entire development, including obviously the addition. The application itself notes it as a minor statement application, but looking at the code and the particular sections of the code that was referenced in the application and the notice, I believe it's a major because if my calculations are correct, it's greater than 400 square feet and anything greater than 400 square feet, primaries or an addition necessitates an interest in approval. So, I think that's incorrect and that is a challenge to what someone thought when they made the application, but I think looking literally at the application and the code, that's number one. Number two, the site plan, it should really have distances, setbacks, et cetera. There's no defined setback that's being requested. There's no dimensions on the existing plan. It's a lighting plan, not a site plan, it's not a survey plan, it's tampered by a professional engineer, as noted. Once again, these are all points of taking off the checklist right on the application associated checklist for that. So, the other thing is I think it's labeled as a lot line variance. I don't believe the code speaks to that. They speak to use in area variances. In my understanding again, this law that if you're dealing with a setback issue, which I think that's what's happening here when they refer to a lot line, that it's an area variance. So, once again, there's the criteria that have to be met or at least presented by the applicant answering the questions of, does it meet the criteria granted area variances? So, those are all the key high-level points that I'd like to make. And here again, parking requirements based on building's growth footage, the town, our village, excuse me again, a village accepted and village acknowledged official approval. Also, the application, there's, where's the other application that they mentioned on three Shane Place? They noted that it was received and reviewed and signed off by the building inspector's office. This one, from what I saw, doesn't sort of thing, so I don't know if that happens on. And here again, I would think that the role at the point before getting into this board is evidenced by that first one which had that sign and all that, that all of these criteria for an application, they reviewed the documents and concluded that everything was in place, the type of stuff they said goes on. So, I can give you more detail, but I think that was kind of the overview. Here again, that's a challenge of the application at this point, although I ask that consideration be made, and if this were the, you know, once it's a three-streeted or a, what you wrote on it tonight, events, it's not from your mother, that you consideration resident 66 State Street, more specific with the issue that in a one-story building, that's the other criteria for a major versus a minor. A minor is a one-story, a major is a two-story. And here again, the particular building now, there's four sections, and there's a lower height and then a higher height, and then the other building, I don't know, is used as storage. Here again, people object to that, but that has a greater offset than in the existing building, and I think that should be taken into consideration. And last but not least, in the comprehensive plan, they always talk about consideration when it's adjacent to a residential, number one. And now looking at setback requirements, I believe since it's a major, it's a 15 or 35-foot setback is the requirement. If it's adjacent to a residential, it's 35. And here again, I understand that's probably why they went for the variance, but I think that data should be presented so both this board and the public understand that information. And if the applicant doesn't know it, I can understand that, there's a lot to go through code and just the ins and outs, it's a time and see how much is still there. I'll be glad to address any questions. I know I have a few quick comments on the other one, I just got one or two, I can wait and come on.
Okay. I'll take it. Are you done with your comments for now?
Yes, unless you want to comment on your one really quickly, the other application. So, to you.
The other application for three Shane Place, you mentioned use variance, that was for three Shane Place, and we haven't opened the public hearing for that one yet and the applicant isn't there here, so I think we're going to defer that to our next regular meeting.
And side, and side with the short-term rentals, I thought I picked up the latest revised packet, and it was in packet advertised as that being tonight, but maybe just the agenda itself was revised on?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no packet materials for that discussion point.
Right, so I picked up the agenda for tonight, we just didn't include it, so I think other people might be doing that too.
There's an updated page to the agenda on the website, separate from the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone online that would like to submit any comments?
We do have one person on deck. Hello, Lynn. You just have to unmute yourself and you can talk. Name an address, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, this is Lynn Cole. I am the resident of 66 State Street, so that is the property that would back right up to where the proposed addition is, so this would be right at the back of my backyard. And I have significant concerns about this, both in terms of my quality of life and living in this home as well as the impact on my property value. This proposed addition that's listed on the application as being a small addition is actually quite large, is probably a similar footprint to my home in terms of like the square footage of the single floor. It would, my current home, which I own and I've put a lot of money into improving and increasing the property value, from the back windows, you can look out and see the open space Pittsburgh area, you know, from the back windows, and this would block that view and block any access to that back area. We currently have a gate that allows access to that back area, and for that reason, it would, you know, reduce our enjoyment of our home and our property value were we to look at that in the future, and I have, you know, I have significant concerns about that.
Okay. Is that all your comments at this time?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to submit any comments?
None, no one else.
Okay. Well, I think the completeness of this application, is there another discussion? Yes?
Sorry, just to quickly, number one, I think elevations also are required and then that.
Please state your name and address, because some people can't see on.
370 State Street, elevations are also critical as far as the checklist, and then I think the square footage is certainly, I guess it's if directed, if that's the case, I think it's about 4,200, or excuse me, 2,300 square feet versus the approximate 20, 4,200 square feet of my calculations, if I'm saying that right.
Okay, thank you.
If you need that supplement for the twos, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, discussion among the board. Anyone want to start off with thoughts?
Should we address the completeness first?
Yeah, well, I have concerns about the completeness as well.
Can I, sorry, Charlie Fox, our property owner, our application was made, the building inspector told us exactly what we needed to submit for this, and it says it's a minor, a minor.
Minor shape.
Thank you, minor shape plan, and the fact that it's already on impervious surface basically doesn't necessarily, it actually helps our application because it's removing the dumpster and putting a building there. And so, he asked us to show the plan, where the down slopes would be coming down, which we did, the lighting, which we did, and the outline of the building's work plan, which we did, and it's also scanned by and architected as well, and engineered. So, I mean, this is what he asked for, this is what we delivered, and so.
Okay. And your architect is not here tonight, correct?
No, no, he's self-present.
Okay, thank you. No, they're not required to be here. So, I guess I agree with concerns about the completeness of this. We don't have elevations of the building, we don't have any details on the area, I don't know how far this building is going to be from the property line, the variance application didn't state how far it's going to be from the property line. I don't even know where the front of the building is, to be honest. Steve isn't here, but whether it's a front setback or a side setback that they're applying for, I don't know, because there's no street next to this building.
Right.
And I know our code is a mess and sorting this out with these types of things.
Yeah.
So, I share some concerns about this, and what would people like to do? Would we like to talk about some things we'd like to see, or would we like the building inspector to try to sort this out? Or are people okay with this?
Well, I think we, the elevation certainly needs.
We submitted elevation, oh, sorry, we submitted elevation, we're ordering elevation.
Okay.
You mean this picture?
Yeah, that's one way we're directed to submit.
Well, they normally have like an architectural drawing that lists.
And that is.
No, that lists the size, like the building height, the size of the windows, the length, the width.
Three, and it's going to match the existing conditions of the current building that's there.
Okay.
This is what we were directed to submit by your building inspector, because I confused.
Okay.
I think the public comment period is over. Did you stop?
We haven't closed, we haven't closed the public. Oh, so you think we should discuss amongst ourselves?
Right, and if you want to entertain more feedback from the board, you can do that, but this is not a question and answer period. You know, if the board wants to have a preliminary discussion, it can have a preliminary discussion without being interrupted.
Okay, all right, so thanks. So, let's talk about what we want to do, what we want to, let's see. So, we can talk about some of the things presented to us. Another way I sometimes like to look at things is what are we required to actually review and make findings on, and do we have information to make findings on some of those things? And some of the common things I make findings on is adequacy of landscaping, and I haven't seen any landscaping plan here. I know there's, maybe their plan is for no landscaping. The adequacy of lighting, I know that there are some lights placed here, but I don't know anything about these lights. I don't know how many lumens are outputting, I don't know how much light is going to be on the ground, so I'm having a hard time finding a way to make a finding about that. Let's take a look at some other things that we have to make findings on.
Do you want the worksheets?
Yeah, do you have them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Take one, have it back.
Alexandra, do you want to?
Always, always prepared.
I don't know, maybe for me, now that I just think about it.
Serious, thank you.
Okay, so the first one was variance, our standard variance template. The next one is for site plan. So, I, okay, I guess I'm interested in talking about site plan first. Is that all right with everybody?
Thinking of.
So, our first finding here that we normally take a look at is conformance with the comprehensive plan and LWRP. I think we can skip over that for now, that doesn't eat, if that's okay with everybody. Adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic and circulation. There was a comment we received about the adequacy of parking and traffic, and I guess without commentary from the building inspector, I do not know how this building impacts the parking situation in this building, in this lot.
I mean, I don't know. I'm looking at it and the area that they're proposing to cover doesn't appear to be places, a place where cars would drive, it's where they're currently keeping the dumpsters, right? So, I don't know, but I want, I'm happy to hear what other people's thoughts are, how it would affect.
The only thought I have was the actual dumpster aspect of the garage.
Where's the dumpster going to go?
Where is that going?
Yeah, oh, no, that's a good point, yeah.
Because they're so big, the garbage trucks that come in, how is that traffic potentially at that corner going to be?
That's a good point, we should.
Turn around.
Where are the dumpsters going, yeah.
Well, I guess one of my concerns about parking is I do not know if the parking, there's a number of parking spots for all these buildings, and when you put in a new building, there's normally a desire.
Additional.
Additional parking, and so I have no idea how this site complies with parking requirements with this addition.
And, yeah, I mean, they can ask for a variance on parking if they need it, but we need to know if we need.
Yeah, we, I just don't know if the parking is adequate, parking is deficient or not. And so, I would be interested in finding more out about that, and that would probably be upon the building inspector to review that matter, or the applicant could do it, either one. So, vehicular traffic and circulation, you had some comments on it about the dumpster and access to the dumpster. I guess I would agree, I have no idea how that dumpster, I don't know much at all about the dumpster location, it's really a dot in the drawing that we had.
And again, kind of where that peters off into that kind of corner, it just, you know, negotiating that, I just have no idea how that would look, so that was one of my questions.
So, yeah, and that brings up that we know nothing at all about the dumpster. We don't know what the enclosure is going to look like, we don't know the dimensions of it, we don't know, I don't know much at all about it. Okay, let me move on to the next finding on our list here. We have adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian and bicycle access and circulation. So, presumably for pedestrian access, they're just walking across the parking lot. Does anyone have concerns about this or want to see anything more?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't.
Okay. Compatibility to proposed uses to the adjacent uses. We did hear something from the adjacent resident, they mentioned they had a gate in the back. I have absolutely no idea what is going on from these drawings in the back in that area. I don't know how far the building is from the gate, I don't, I just don't know what's going on there. I think it merits looking into.
Yeah, I'd like some more information on it, especially given that people have raised concerns.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that it sounds like there is a resident who is kind of going back and forth between that area, as you've said, it's just, I like seeing the new rendering, but I don't know what the status quo is, so before I can say, oh, it's not a problem, I don't, might be, it'd just be nice to see more details on existing.
Yeah, you can go down there. I believe existing has a dumpster with a wall or fence around it, and I believe there is a gap between that fence and the current building, so someone can walk through there. So, part of her concern is she wants to be able to walk out her back gate and walk into the shopping plaza. I don't know what's going on down there in this proposal, so that is my take on what I believe is the current situation down there.
That is my, because I went, I looked at the dumpsters, but I couldn't figure out, it looked like there was a little causeway, but I guess that's the gate.
There's a little gap between the back of the building and the, there's a wall and fence there, and so I'm presuming there's going to be some gap between the building and the wall and the fence there, but I'm not quite sure what that is yet.
Yeah. Sounds like you shed concerns as well.
Yeah, I mean, they had some concerns over the appearance of this, and a lot can be fixed with landscaping as well, should we. be fixed with landscaping as well, should we want to entertain that. So, anyway.
I guess that's maybe more of a landscaping and screening question than a compatibility question.
Yeah, we can, we can get to that.
If it's needed.
If it's needed, yes.
Right, right.
Next one was off-street parking and loading and access. We kind of mentioned that already, that we don't know the parking situation. And you mentioned loading and access to the dumpster. I don't know how that's going to work. We just don't have much information. Landscaping and screening provisions.
I mean, I guess one thing I would say about the park and loading access, we did hear that we've got some pretty big delivery trucks coming in there and making deliveries. So presumably there is enough room back there to do these kinds of things, but I guess we're sort of speculating as to how that applies to trash, or yeah, to the dumpsters. So I would want more definite information. I don't think we can make a finding based on pure speculation.
Yeah, well, I guess there's two things. There's the building that they're proposing, and they need deliveries there. And then there's the trash, which needs to be picked up, and the trash is like clear across the parking lot, so they're two separate issues.
And they do receive deliveries now.
Right, yeah, it's not, it's not something's coming in the future.
It's a pretty big parking lot, and there's a pretty good sized area to turn around back there.
Yeah, there is.
So I guess I'm lesser concerned about deliveries to the building.
Right.
I think you're not concerned about fire trucks getting access to any part of that building either.
We haven't heard anything about it, but I know the circulation patterns was dictated by the fire access when this was, this AL was done many years ago, but we don't, Steve isn't here, so he can't comment on the fire.
I'm trying to get a hold of him. He did say to text him if you guys have questions, and it sounds like you do. So I'm just trying to get him to call in, but he hasn't responded yet.
Okay. Okay, so are we off of parking and access?
Yeah.
So the next one is landscaping and screening. There is no landscaping plan in here, and I believe landscaping plan is a requirement for the application. I know there's not much room for landscaping, but I don't know what's going on behind the building, between the building and the adjacent residential areas. It just doesn't show it in the drawing. And when I took a look at some of our landscaping codes, the only thing that really kind of stood out to me is building foundation plantings, such as having a little bed around the perimeter of the building, that they may have room for, I don't know. I guess that would depend on how that would work out with parking. That may be something we have a lot of discretion over, where if they really can't make that work, we could consider that. If they could, I personally always like to get a little bit of landscaping where we can get it.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the rendering here, it doesn't look like there's really any landscaping, and that, if there isn't any there now, then it makes sense to require.
And I also, there's parking spots there, and I don't know if there's room for it. So this is a thought.
I guess need more information.
Yeah, I just don't know what's reasonable to ask for and what's not. I don't want to ask for it or anything unreasonable, because I know it's a challenging area to work in.
Yeah, the expectation, again, I'm trying to think of where the front, we're facing the parking lot, I wouldn't expect anything. But the back, again, given the resident concern of what they're seeing and, you know, potentially wanting something to block that out or ready, I don't know.
Well, and it sounded like the resident concern was not so much screening, but more concerned that the building is now, is going to block the existing view that she has of open space behind, if I understood.
Oh, towards the actual, like, field.
Right, yeah. If I understood correctly, I think that was the comment.
Okay, well then in that case.
Well, knowing the height of the building would be helpful for us to evaluate that.
That's true. I mean, we can, we can see that it's the same height as the existing building, but it might be helpful to.
I think it is, I think it's.
It's closed shorter. It looks a little shorter, but.
Well, yeah, you're right, it's.
It's like a little step.
Yeah.
This is also not a stamped drawing, and.
True, yeah.
So I think if we actually had a drawing that said the height, length, width, and so on, that would be what the facade appearance, that would be something that would give us a lot more information. Okay, so that's landscaping. The next thing is signage, the adequacy, location, and design of signage. I do not know if any new signs are planned.
None are indicated.
None are indicated. I can't say signage is something that I'm terribly concerned about here. If they have to put another sign on the front of the building, the HPV can, you know, look at that as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
I don't have too many concerns about it. Sometimes when signs are put in front yard, they can block visual sight lines of sidewalks and stuff like that, but I feel that's not a concern here. Okay, so what I'm hearing is they, we don't know what they're doing for signage, and we also don't seem to particularly care.
Doesn't appear to.
It doesn't appear to be a likely concern. Okay, next one is lighting, and whether it prevents light trespass.
So you can see the positioning of where the lights will be, but I think to what you said, kind of like the Kelvins and kind of what it would look like in terms of, is it a soft light, is it a, you know? But we have the wattage.
We have the wattage, and we have the color temperature. We do not have the height, we do not have.
Oh, no, no, okay, yeah, we do have the color, okay, I'm sorry.
We don't have the height, we know the general location of them. We also don't know the light distribution pattern. So you weren't here as part of it, but what was this, this is long ago, like eight years ago or something like that? They had a complete lighting pan for the entire site built up by, I think I actually remember the guy, Mike Quagliata, I think was the guy that did it. And don't ask me why I remember that name, it's just an odd name, I don't normally remember names. But he came with a whole lighting plan for the entire site. And I believe one of the lights he designed is being removed, it's over by the dumpster, and then they're proposing three more. And one of the topics of light trespass, and these lights are very, very close to the property line, so is, some questions I have is adequate light around the building? Is it too bright? Is there light going on neighbor's property? That's, so I really can't answer any of that from what's been proposed. Any other thoughts?
By neighbors, do you mean?
This way.
Oh, that way.
Power harness over there. And then there's the other R G N right of way here, which I guess we could debate as to whether we're concerned if light gets on.
I'm almost, more so, the light that's near, I guess, the shed, because of the side, you know, where it will be on the building, it could go the other way as well.
Yeah, it could go the other way.
Like it's reflecting off the side of the building, yeah.
Or it could be bounded up high here, so that person in the house could be.
Could see it, that was my concern.
Yeah. So if there's a shroud around the light, and it puts light around, on the ground, and it's not going back towards other properties, you know, that seems reasonable.
Exactly, if it's going forward, this would be potentially towards a house.
Yes. Adequacy of drainage and stormwater systems. Are we done with lighting discussion for the time being? Adequacy of drainage and stormwater systems. It sounded like they are just having downspouts go onto the ground, which right now, that whole area is 100% paved. So I'm not sure what they're proposing or doing with drainage other than that, and I don't know if that's a concern.
I think we heard that Steve had reviewed that, but maybe we should hear from Steve.
Yeah, I guess I would want to hear from Steve as to what his thoughts are on drainage. The next one, we're okay to move on?
Yep.
Water and sanitary sewers, it doesn't sound like those are being changed.
No.
The adequacy of waste and trash management plans, we have no waste and trash management plan at this time. So we don't have any information about the dumpster, whether its size is adequate, where it is, what it looks like. It sounds like they're going to propose something similar to what is currently there, but I just don't know. It's just a new location. And adequacy of snow removal plans. I think there's snow removal plans we looked at ages ago, but I don't see how many of this here is going to affect it.
No, I mean, there's probably less snow removal going on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if anything's to the benefit.
Yeah.
It would be straight across instead of having to potentially cut into the trash area.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I have no idea if they remove snow from the trash area currently, but.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But going from a trash area to a building, I don't see, yeah. Okay, and then the other question is fire safety, whether the fire marshal has any concerns? That was brought up, and I don't know. I'm assuming this doesn't affect turning radius for fire vehicles, but I don't know. We'll have to, I guess, we'll have to hear from our fire marshal, who's not here tonight.
We missed 14.
We missed 14? Ah, thank you. Whether the proposal will adversely affect health, safety, and general welfare of adjacent property owners.
Seems like general welfare of residents behind.
We had some comments from the resident behind, and I think if we have a little more information, we can dig into that a little more.
Yeah, doesn't sound. Doesn't sound like health or safety are her concerns, but general welfare is pretty broad, so.
Yeah, I guess lighting is something that gets into public safety. I, particularly if it's underlit, I don't see any evidence necessarily that it's underlit from this, but I don't, I mean, we had some comments in the past about this particular property long ago that led to the lighting plan, where some people said that it was really dark in there, and they felt unsafe, their employees, they felt unsafe walking back to their cars late at night when they worked at the restaurants and things like that. So that was, I think, pretty well addressed by the revised lighting plan. So that was good. Anyway, I don't have anything more on health, safety, and general welfare. No, and we also have nothing from the fire marshal, so we just don't know. Any other comments from? So I guess the next question is, I was site plans. Going over to the, the other one, the area variance for the lot lines. Some of my concerns on that were knowing what are the setbacks, and what is the distance from this building to the lot lines? So again, I don't know, I mean, I could speculate which section of code it was. I didn't see it in here, but I think that all needs to be ironed out. We also, we have this site plan, we did not get a survey. I don't know if a survey would have information about the distance between the buildings and the lot line. Should.
It should, yeah.
So I would like to see a survey. Any other thoughts from anyone?
Yeah, I think a survey would be, answer a decent number of these questions.
And a more detailed drawing in the vicinity of this building, too. I'd like to see a much larger one and drawing with all the details in there. And the trash area, too, I'd like some more details around that. So my thought is, based on our discussion tonight, I think we should just leave the public hearing open and see if the applicant can get some clarification to some of the concerns we have. Does that seem reasonable, or do we want to give them a specific list of what we want?
I'd like to provide whatever we can to make their job easier, to give us what we need.
So if they have to come back, that it's done one time.
Yeah, that is exactly.
I don't want to, instead of they get here and then it's like, oh, well, here's another thing you need to, yeah, maybe a list.
I don't know if the way to do it is to do it here in the meeting, or to have them, Steve work with them to provide.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We could write a letter and forward it amongst the board offline and see what we want. Steve isn't here to weigh in on it, because I would be curious as to what, what Steve finds reasonable.
If I could give any help to you, I could give you some of the transcript overview, because you guys are pretty thorough of what you, and you're specific, and I think that may help. And I can just share it with the board if you guys want to generate that letter or send it to Steve, just to do some of the work for you. But I'm pretty sure it's a healthy, we captured a lot.
Yeah, we did, we did. So if you want to do a transcript of, you must have abbreviated a transcript of our discussion.
Abbreviated, yeah.
And then we can copy Steve on that, and maybe do some correspondence offline.
Copy it out.
So do we need a motion in effect to do anything?
Well, then, and also, in whatever we send across in the communication, making sure that the timeline, so that they can hopefully get to this next meeting, whatever the next one is.
November, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the applicants can just connect with the office to open it.
Yeah, I'll talk to you. A lot of these things are already, these things that are just, with the downstairs, the exact same dumpster levels.
Yeah, I'm noted.
The architect has already approved, we're just doing this behind a different building. The building's on the lot line, that's, so that's also the neighbor doesn't have an access agreement with the property owner, and the gate's useless, stuff like that.
Anyway, you.
Drainage is not changing, because it all she drains, and that was approved. The lighting plan, that's pre-approved by you guys.
Yeah, just, I don't want to get into a back and forth here. So I think.
I can answer a lot of your questions that you guys just talked about, because I have a lot of the answers.
Well, do we, do we want to allow him to present? Or do we want to save it for the next meeting, after we get some updated information?
I think it'd be helpful to save it.
To save it?
I don't mind hearing it now, I just not.
I just haven't heard anything from Steve.
Yeah, I don't mind hearing it now, I'm just not sure that we're going to be able to do much with it without.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree with that. Also, I wouldn't mind hearing if anything that we've mentioned is onerous.
Right, yeah.
I wouldn't mind hearing that either, because I don't want to be onerous, I think, that we can get some updated information that shouldn't be too hard to supply, that could meet a lot of our concerns. All right, so I think the.
What would you think about scheduling a special meeting?
I don't have a problem scheduling a special meeting, maybe Steve could attend.
If a lot of the information is at hand, and what we're asking for can be easily ascertained, maybe in a couple of weeks, how about a special meeting to keep the project?
I don't have a problem at all moving it along, and either we can formalize our request for what additional things we want.
Right.
And they can submit some additional stuff, maybe if they submit some additional stuff, we, our list goes down.
Yeah.
We appreciate that very much.
Okay. So I think we kind of agreed that we don't mind hearing from the applicant if they wanted to address any of our comments. And also, I would appreciate hearing if there's any time schedule for, for this project. I hadn't heard anything about that, but.
I mean, we don't really have one, because the process.
It's not Charlie, just when you're speaking, because you're off camera, yeah.
We don't have a timeline, because I just know historically, giving approvals to the village is impossible, so we might be getting going as soon as possible, but, I mean, I said this follows, it's probably going to be a year from now, just how long it takes to get things through these days. So, I mean, the.
So there's no, there's no initial set. So there's no, there's no initial set time?
Right, there's no, we're trying to, we're not, like, we're trying to be very conservative on spending money on this thing, as, again, you know.
Don't want to get ahead.
Down this, this road before, and, and, you know, we have tried to improve this plaza over the years. We're trying to retain tenants, you know, they're a very viable business.
Yeah.
I mean, losing tenants, left the light in this village, and we need to keep good businesses around. The building is on the property line, you know, the house that the lady was talking about at 66 State Street, we sold her that house, you know, so we converted from a rental to a single-family home. So that was an improvement, I think, to the area. The lighting isn't going to change, except the fact that we're moving some fixtures around, those existing buildings, and the garage, we're using approved fixtures that, when we went through the whole site plan approval process, same fixture that was approved for that, those buildings, on this proposed building. The dumpster enclosure is not changing, construction or design, it's getting placed behind, like, full shade slash notion. It's on the land.
Okay.
Landscaping, we're not, we're not taking away any landscaping, therefore, we didn't, we decided not to add any, because at the end of the day, it'll probably just get damaged by either a delivery truck or a snowplow. Or somebody parking in the building, like, you know. Access, we meet the fire requirements, you know, we created that fire lane in front of Copper Leaf Brewery, so the pump truck, we pulled it, run hoses down, and the turnaround radius up in front of, above, is big enough for the fire trucks, we had the whole fire department down there on day, doing a whole task. So that was addressed with our prior site plan approval. I think drainage, drainage is she drained right now, goes to the harvest property and on the easement, that was approved, like, years ago, I think. So really, all we're doing is expanding the existing building, tying it to the garage, it's on the property line. We're adding a little bit more rainwater, because of the roof structure is a little larger than the current dumpster, I think, curvaceous area. Yeah, so I mean, our trash schedule is not changing.
Right.
Nothing different, it's literally just blocking that building in and moving the dumpster.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I'm happy to work through, you know, whatever, but a lot of the stuff is probably already on file here.
Okay, thank you for the comments.
Stan Brenishen, representing the vote.
Yes.
For the State Street, just one quick thing, we're actually going to be adding parking spaces. Because currently, there is no parking between the back of our building and the garage, because that's all dumpster and.
Oh, you need to have trucks getting in.
Now, we can have vertical parking against the building to continue with these. So you're probably going to be adding maybe five, six spaces currently out there.
You're, you're talking about that right there?
Yeah, because currently, there's where you see the car, there is parking against the existing building, and that would be continued down against the new building.
Okay.
That's helpful, that's helpful.
That is helpful, and it would also be helpful to have that shown on the plans. So we know the dimensions of the parking spots, and whether cars can back out safely, that type of thing. Looking for Art?
I mean, we did open up for more public comments.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to ask, yeah, go ahead.
Art, you said the State Street, just real quickly, a couple of comments, and I think that the board would also consider the fact that the garage, which we mentioned, is connecting to, so it would be one long building, instead of the existing building, to move to the existing. That is leading, one story number one. Number two, there's a reason why it's setback, at least twelve feet off the property line. So I would imagine, just supposition on this point, that there is a reason why it was setback twelve feet from the property line and a single story, that may be as simple as the original building was there so many years ago, subsequently, the new building came in, so the board looked at the code, the code changed, or they took that into consideration, said it should be one, and then offset it twelve. But here again, the fact that it's there, that's part of the building, too. So if we were to be proceeding with respect to that, that would be, you know, just a single story if the board were to ask, with that consideration of the existing building connecting to.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're referring to, it's a twelve-foot setback, but.
That building appears to be setback, when you go out, if you were to walk out there, I have, I have a plan.
There's some additional information, and you could share this, but it's two. What you can see in the building, what I tried to work off the scale, and I think it's approximate, but this is, I think, about twelve feet or so, I just pasted off.
Oh, you're saying that's the name.
So I'm saying, if they're tying into this, why not keep that there? And then, because it's a major site plan, here again, technically, it should be thirty-five feet setback, if my read of the code is correctly, right, because it involves a residential. They're going to do it, give some consideration and fairness to the applicant, and then the neighbors, this balancing act, so one-story setback. Here again, I know the landowner, resident, land at sixty-six would prefer open to the area, so I'm just suggesting that as consideration for the board, if they decide to approve the application. That's yours, if you'd like.
Okay, so my understanding of his comment is, there's two separate setbacks from the residential properties in apply. There is two buildings, one has a gap between the building and the property line, and the other looks like it does not.
Yeah, right.
It's, it's, it's almost like the existing kind of customer showroom area does not.
Sits on the line.
That's on the line, yeah.
It's on the line, but then the other shed has a setback.
Okay.
And so it's almost like making that new addition align with the setback.
Right. Wow, well, I guess I think this is.
It looks, looks much, much smaller than that.
What?
It looks much smaller than that.
It does, yeah.
Right, but anyway, yes, the front building sits on the line.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, again, it's a little hard to tell from this photo, if it does sit on the line.
Well, we're talking the other side.
Other side.
On the other side, yes.
Okay. All right.
I wanted to give comment about availability for the building inspector for a special meeting.
Sure.
He's actually going on vacation, so he wouldn't be available, I guess, within a couple of weeks, until the thirtieth.
He's not available, he's not available the next four weeks, I don't have his vacation plan.
I'm just talking about, you're saying, if you're like, next week, yeah, but if we want to give the applicant some time, then Steve isn't going to be available the following two weeks.
I see, so he's.
So the last two weeks in October are out.
Pretty much, the thirtieth.
Right, yeah.
So the week of the fourteenth, week of the twenty-first, he's out. Next week is the week of the seventh, and he is here.
He's here.
And so I guess then we don't necessarily need to have him at a special meeting if we have it. I'm thinking that if he's going to do a transcript, what?
I don't know.
I think the last few meetings, it's been really, it's kind of been a little discouraging when the building inspector wasn't here for some questions, so it sounds, a lot came up for him this meeting, I would strongly suggest.
I, I would hate to have him come back in.
Yeah, and then there's some other questions.
We need something, that we need Steve for, and we can't pursue, yeah, I.
I definitely want Steve's input, but my only question is whether we want to delay moving this along to get that.
Right.
Well.
Or have it next week.
Or have it next week.
Yeah.
I would, I'm sorry, I didn't prefer to have Steve in the meeting, I mean, just.
Yeah, no, me, me, too.
For sure.
We're almost trying to think for your sake.
And I'm happy to wait till November to have Steve in the meeting, and not rush things, and everybody get on the same page.
Okay, oh, okay. Well, I think realistically, construction, there's two months left in the construction season, and I think realistically, this isn't being built this fall.
And it's a full-blown construction, and that's what the building is currently, so we can do that any time of year, so.
Okay.
Good point, yeah.
So it sounds like we could wait for, but as long as Steve is there. So you're saying that, that would be the thirtieth of October would be the first?
Yeah, and it's a week before our next meeting, so if the applicant, usually if the applicant's okay waiting, then.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I will make sure Steve is here.
Okay, so I, what I've heard that people want to do is to kind of work towards getting a concise list of what additional information we want from the applicant.
Correct.
And the applicant may already have some.
Correct.
We wanted Steve's input on that, and you were going to work on summarizing our discussion. I know that's going to take a little bit of time.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Get, get chance GPT to help out.
Oh, yeah. I use a different one, but that one's there, too, if I need it.
So.
And we get that, to get that letter out, and then have Steve, I guess, effectively, it would be the next meeting.
I basically just send a document, whatever you guys decide, whoever you decide to pass that on to, it's up to you, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, if it's that close to the next meeting, I guess, it would make more sense to wait until the next meeting.
I'm okay with that. Do we know if we have new applications pending for our next meeting?
Today is the deadline, I have too many coming.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have that defer.
Well, I was wondering how busy we're going to be at our next meeting, that place and those things. So it sounds like, what I'm hearing, is between the option of meeting next week and giving a little more time for this, summary to come out and talk to Steve, it sounds like the preference is to wait till our next meeting, continue the discussion, work towards a concise list of what we want to see, and then have the applicant make one round of updates.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right, so my motion then, our next meeting is at the sixth of November?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion then to keep the public hearings open and continue discussion at our next regular meeting on November sixth at six thirty PM. Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blistrak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so, and for, we had some members of the public speak, we left the public hearing open. We can continue to send comments, you can attend our next meeting and make additional comments. Normally, we leave these things open for comments, we like to hear from our residents until we're ready to act on things. So this is still up for renewed discussion. All right, well, that concludes fifty state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next matter was the, what we're doing with the short-term rentals law. And what was before us was a seeker referral, and the Board of Trustees wants to be lead agency to do the environmental review, and I think, maybe you can update us as to what we can do. We can either send them a note saying, sure, we can send them a note saying something different, or we can send.
Send an answer, and they'll take it by default.
Or do nothing.
You want to, you know, give them the courtesy of a response.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
So what are our thoughts, to just let them, send them a note saying, yep, we can be your lead agency?
Yes, since they request, absolutely.
Okay, and I don't know where we want to, next thing is to discuss where we're going with this review. We have a pending LWRP review that needs to occur, that was, we're kept waiting for the environmental review to be resolved before we can act on it. We haven't made notice of a public hearing for that yet. So I guess we're not hearing it tonight, do we want to schedule it later next meeting? Or the only other option would be a special meeting, if anyone wants to discuss it in a special meeting.
So we're waiting for an environmental review? No.
I thought.
You, I think you were waiting for, to resolve the trustee issue.
Yeah.
Right.
Start the LWRP review.
Right, that's what I.
But you can't conclude it until after the seeker review concludes with either neg, dec, or.
Right, so the discussion can.
It can start.
Except it wasn't, it wasn't noticed, so you probably don't want to.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Start on the merits of the LWRP review, and, you know, this, this is just my personal opinion, but I think it would be helpful to have a map that shows which properties
I agree.
are going to be impacted by the proposed short-term rental law, so that you can intelligently determine
Right.
and assess how.
How much will affect your. Which was requested at our, at our last meeting.
Well, well, we know you have the one really big printout, but I don't know if, did we request to put the actual properties on there?
I don't remember that, I did, because I also have a question on to which radius the notices go out to, so I don't even know.
Well, you can't notice it unless you know which.
Yeah, exactly, I was just going to say, I don't even know the addresses to present, to prepare a map for, yeah.
So that is an excellent point.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, how do we notice the LWRP review for a law?
Well, that, and how do you conduct the LWRP review if you don't know which properties are impacted by the proposed law?
Well, I think the law impacts the entire village.
But it only regulates short-term rentals in particular portions of the village.
Right, that's the issue.
So it's almost like all the residents, or the traditional kind of houses, there is no availability anyways. So it's, it's concentrated, so we need to know.
Right.
The existing.
In my look at, there's two things on this, my looking, reading of the law is kind of quite different in that it's both saying where they can go, and it's also banning places where things are currently allowed.
It's not clear to me that they're currently allowed in the areas that they might be disallowed in with the new short-term rental law, but maybe that's a conversation for the client, and then like, a conversation for the discussion.
My, I guess, my concern is that it appears to be banning bed and breakfasts, which we have code for. And, but the nuances of that, I don't know.
I think it would be helpful for the board to have a map showing the areas in which the short-term rentals would be explicitly permitted.
Yes.
Correct.
Are these the same addresses that would be, that the LWRP would apply to, or this is just for reference?
The LW, it's like a Venn diagram, so you, it'll be, the, the boundaries won't line up.
Okay.
There'll be a part of the village in which short-term rentals are permitted under the new short-term rental law, and then there's the LWRP district, and there may be places that they overlap and places that they don't.
And if there's no overlapping, then.
Then you don't need to do a new LWRP.
Right.
Right.
Okay, well, so the first matter is the seeker lead agency. So I think the, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to the Board of Trustees indicating we are okay with them being lead agency and seeker. Second.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blistrak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So I think we can circulate a letter amongst ourselves and.
I think the seeker referral you got has the signature line at the bottom, you can just sign it, setback.
And who has, does someone have, did it, or I sent a copy, digital copy, right?
You sent a digital copy, so you have the original.
Not with me, I don't, but.
Just you and I.
Yeah.
I don't have an original, but never know.
If you stop by the office, I have some other stuff, like resolutions for you to sign, so you can do that for them, too. If you stop by the office, I have some other stuff, like resolutions for you to sign, so I can do that for you too.
All right, here is the letter, I do have a copy of it from them, so it does have a signature field. Says to Village of Pittsford from blah, 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 approval, disapproval, signature. So if we're okay, I could just sign that we approve of Village of Pittsford to be lead agency.
Yeah.
No problem.
It works.
Do it.
Okay, so I guess we'll, the motion, so this will be the letter we'll send out that we, we discussed. So I can sign this and check the approval. And, okay. All right, well, that will resolve that.
So then, after that, effectively, again, the mapping aspect will be next.
And then the question, and then based on that, is that going to determine if we put this on our agenda in the future? Potentially.
I'd like to run the area by you before it gets noticed, just to make sure we're noticing it properly.
I think that would be great, I would love to see.
Thank you.
Oh, so your question is, where do mailings need to go? Both.
Two questions, both. I want to know whether any, whether short-term rentals are being regulated in the LWRP.
District.
Right.
The over, the Venn diagram.
Yeah, overlap.
Yes, I'm very visual, I'm like. Yeah, tracks and maps and maps.
All right, so I guess scheduling of this hearing is pending.
I think an email will be fine, if you want to put it on the agenda, because we have a couple of weeks till it needs to be noticed.
Okay. All right, I think adjourn, we're good?
I think so.
Think so? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Was that Member Wilks, second?
Yep.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Blistra?
Aye.
Motion passes.